Okay, I'll call this common council meeting for the month of September to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call roll, please.
Brown, here.
Evans.
Here.
Foudy, here.
Grattan.
Here.
Merle, here.
Schuster.
Here.
First item of business is agenda approval. Is your motion approved? The agenda is printed. Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carried. Approved minutes of previous meetings. Your motion had effect. Motion by Brown.
Second.
Second by Foudy. Any further discussion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carried. Approved minutes of intervening meetings. Hello? Motion by Merle. Second by Grattan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Communications. Record shows there is nobody in attendance. Communications, or is that supposed to be in public comment?
No.
We're missing public comment. Communications, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Communications, we did have a pre-construction meeting for the Highland, or the East Oak Street project there last week, and they're starting to move forward on that last leg of that project. Follow-up minutes from that meeting, are they available to everybody, or just the ones that were in attendance at that meeting?
Just the ones that were in attendance, but I can't forward them. I am preparing an update from Jason to update the website as well. Tell me he's aware that I'm looking for that.
We had a slight delay on the Highland Street construction because the gas company elected to come in at the last minute and slowed everything down, and the contractor elected to pull off for a couple of weeks the U of M space to replace the gas line. But I guess it's better to get it done now until we've got the grass all growing again, and then start ripping it all up again. So that's why if you hear any comments from people coming to Road Cruises and they're working, it's because the gas company is consuming the last couple of weeks. But Solper, or Soper, the other contractor, he started on Oak Street. Things are starting to progress as well. We're hoping to get the curb gutter, sidewalk, and first go to Blacktop on Highland Street. We're looking just to get the utility infrastructure done on Oak Street before the snow flies, and then we'll pursue the concrete restoration on that street as well come spring. So that's kind of the timeline that we're shooting for right now for everybody. And of course, with the outside funding that we have for the Highland Street project, that has to be done by the end of October, complete, you know, before us can get the funding for that. So that's the update. Moving on, we have appointments for bills. We have checks for $854,202.41. No vouchers. Electronic transfers of $168,764.01. Is your motion approved for payment of bills? Motion by Schuster. Second by Grattan. Any further discussion? Questions or comments on the bills? Roll call, both, please.
Schuster?
Aye.
Excuse me, Grattan?
Aye.
Brown? Hi. Evans?
Aye.
Foudy?
Aye.
Merle?
So bills have been approved. Reports of officials. Mayor, I guess I gave my report. Clerk, treasure.
Well, as you know, Paul is here from Javis. So he had said that the update to the website has been complete as of today, so that is available. Unfortunately, anybody that's searching for the dot net will no longer be available after next Friday. But Google will have the almighty say before it goes. So if anybody searches for the city of Juneau, they will be directed to the new website. Report for Dodge County Arca Funds. No funds were awarded to the city, unfortunately. I did get notification. Termination letter was sent out to Waste Management within their contract terms. The old bins are to be picked up. Tentatively have them out by December 29th. Will be your last pickup day. And the new bins will be delivered either starting that day or the next day, that Friday. Tentatively, they're looking at a Friday pickup instead of Thursday. So if we're making these changes, it looks like that tentatively will be the day of relief that they'll be picking up. So we'll make sure we have the website updated with that as well. With that being said, I sent out an email earlier in regards to the bulk pickup being changed to September 29th. Scott got an email late this morning stating that they didn't have the staffing to pick up this Thursday. So they changed the date to the 29th. So trying to get the information out there, you know, Facebook, website. I talked to a couple of people on Oak Street today, actually, because they had concerns with how it was going to be picked up. So I'm spreading the word that way. 2023 budget is underway. Still waiting on numbers from the Health and Dental Insurance, some state numbers. November election preparation is underway. And absentee ballots will be sent out on Monday. And tentatively, something that the mayor and I spoke about was tentatively setting a time limit for the chairman's reports. I did reach out to the clerk's network, and basically it's something, a time limit that is set by the mayor, so it's not a resolution that is adopted. So kind of limiting reports and department head reports. So just to answer that out there. If you have any questions, let me know. But I think that's all I have.
Any questions for the clerk? Seeing none. Any questions on the written reports? Building for bid? Police Department report, Juneau Fire and Rescue, and Juneau EMS report? Nothing? Move on. Reports of commissions, committee members, boards? Library report? Do that.
I don't want to make this quick. Because, but I got smores, so there you go. Pass them out. All right. And if you notice on my shirt, that's why. Readers have s'more fun at the Juneau Public Library. So we actually have, no, you don't. That's my bet. We have, all throughout the month of September, September is Get a Library Card Month, national event. So I want people to get a library card. If you don't have one, this is what they look like. They have an orange monarch butterfly on them. And we also have an app that actually has your barcode in it, too. So it makes it streamlined. If you don't have this, probably have your phone. But in my opinion, those of you with a library card should also be rewarded. So that's what this is. If you check out four times in the month of September, you have acquired the four ingredients you need for a delicious s'more. So check out one sticker, check out two, and you fill this out, and then this becomes your entry to potentially be the winner of a tabletop s'more kit and a gourmet s'more book. So think about cold weather and what this could really be. This could be fun. So anyway, if you don't have a library card, get one. If you have one, come on in and do some checkouts. We have presented this theme at National Night Out. We presented this Readers Have S'more Fun at Dodgeland's Open House. So we are getting this out there in front of the public. So hopefully you're seeing that public. Also, back-to-school story walk. We have had that set up in Saint John's School Playground, and it is currently, it was currently the first week of school in Dodgeland, taken down today. So we love that we have supportive schools that allow us to bring library programming even on-site. And last but not least, I just want to thank all of you that supported verbally or by attendance the outdoor movies that we sponsored in joint cooperation. This wasn't just the library, so I want to bring clarity to that. This is Parks and Rec, many departments providing their labor and the library, providing these outdoor movies to our community. I'd like to publicly thank Yankees Piggly Wiggly, Andrew Meehan, and Edward Jones Company, Future All-Stars Academy, and Grattan's Garage's Mini Warehousing for sponsoring those four outdoor movies. Mr. Grattan, when you sponsor a movie, apparently it rains. That's what I've just figured out. Because Saturday was the movie that they sponsored. But we still had it go on. So thank you, community, and we do plan on bringing that back in 2023. Already have some seed money from Landmark Credit Union. They donated $500 towards purchasing equipment so that we can be an independent city providing this. So keep talking it up. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for that? Guess not. Thank you. Moving on. Next, we have Plan Commission. David?
Plan Commission. We did meet, and we met with Dodge County Housing Authority for a new development in Juneau on the Hickey property east of the school. We're looking at the plans for that, and we approved the initial concept drawing, and they'll be bringing in really done plans for the next time they come to us. So we're looking forward to the new development in town. We also discussed, more discussion on the pilot program for keeping the chickens within the city limits. And we are waiting to hear back from the city's legal service as to if we've got all our bases covered for the pilot program. That was our meeting.
This is example. We're putting up 30 buildings. The ones that were built on the flat towards Dodgeland High School, they're all duplexes, of course. They all have attached garages, full basements. The ones that are backed into the hill, I thought this was kind of a unique concept. They put the garages in the basement. And they're about 1,200 square foot on top. I thought they used the best use of their land down there. This is a PUD development, so they handle all the infrastructure underground inside their campus area, take care of all the maintenance area and what have you. These are rentals, workforce development housing. You have to have certain criteria to be able to rent these and what have you. They do pay through the pilot program, payment and move taxes, which is almost comparable to the real estate taxes that we collect. So yeah, I thought Donna Brown did a nice job presenting it all. And like I said, they did a pretty nice job as far as utilizing the space that they had there.
Where's the location?
Watertown Memorial Hospital, right across from the high school, next to the clinic.
By Hickey's Woods?
Hickey's Woods. Yep. These are the, this is the concept, the way, the green ones are the ones that are backed into the hill that have the basements in the hill, or the garages in the basement, rather. There's an in and an out, so that they're not landlocked. They do have a retention pond at the end.
How close are they to the houses up on the hill?
There's quite a bit of separation because of the landscaping. They're trying to take down as few trees as they can. Yeah, there's adequate space between that and the cul-de-sac that's up there right now. This is the existing hilltop circle right here. And that's the land that they inherited from the Watertown Memorial Hospital foundation.
How soon are they expected to start building?
She thought they'd have the shovel in the ground yet before the snow flies, but she wasn't sure. I'm sure what they'd be doing is doing infrastructure, underground utilities, stuff like that. I don't think they'll start building until spring. She said, like in Watertown, or in Horicon, that they were all filled up before they even had them completed. See how it goes? Anything else from Dave from planning commission?
Nope.
Don't want to steal your thunder.
Well, I'm glad they had.
I just said, I think I stashed them in there. I thought at least give the people that don't sit on planning commission, I do.
That's good.
Okay. Moving on. Finance Committee, Cheryl?
We did meet. Ashton Dahl from our record department came and presented two bids for new city park signs, and presented that to us. We then discussed the insulation upkeep of the sound barrier installed at the library. We also talked about the renewal of the five-year lease agreement with the city of Juneau Historical Society of Oak Street. Discussed a little bit about the repairs needed to the added adjacent session stand and the softball storage building. Excuse me, Megan provided for us the second quarter financials. And we also did a small discussion on using the ARCA funds and what we're going to do with those. Those things will be coming back a little later. We do have two resolutions this weekend. The first one is Resolution 34-2022, to approve the purchase of two signs for the city park. Resolution 34-2022, approve the purchase of two signs for the city parks. Whereas the Recreation Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed, quote, "purchase two park signs, one for Hickey Park and one for Juneau City Park." Whereas Recreation Committee and Finance Committee recommend to approve the purchase of the two park signs from the Warrior Fabrication, costing not to exceed $1,674.75. Whereas the Recreation Committee and Finance Committee have recommended to approve the city of Juneau DPW to install park signs. Now therefore, be it resolved with the common council of the city of Juneau, accept the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau the 13th day of September 2022, with passage of Resolution 34-2022.
Motion by Brown, second by Merle. Any further discussion?
This Warrior Fabrication is actually from the Wapone High School, and looking at helping with some tech training with our kids there to get those signs made. The signs will be a little bit different. They will not be identical in shape and design. They will be made out of the same materials and same colors, but giving them the opportunity to get some skills.
I did travel to downtown Wapone area, and I think I recognize the ones that they were talking about because they all kind of have a similar construction. Yeah, they're a nice looking sign. They're fine, especially for the money that we're saving. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call, both, please.
Merle? Aye. Merle? Aye. Evans?
Aye.
Foudy?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Resolution 34-2022 has passed.
Resolution 35-2022, approved lease agreement with Dodge Center Historical Society. Whereas the Finance Committee has negotiated a lease with the Dodge Center Historical Society for the purpose of conducting the business of displaying the history of Juneau and Dodge County. Whereas the term of the lease is for five years, as shown in Exhibit A, shall become effective January 1st, 2023. Whereas the amount of the rent will be $5 for a five-year lease ending on December 31st, 2027. Now therefore, be it resolved with the common council of the city of Juneau, accept the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau the 13th day of September 2022. I move for passage of Resolution 35-2022.
Motion by Brown, second by Evans. Any further discussions or questions or comments? I just slid it over to, or turned you to a quick review.
I've done a quick review. The first point I would make is it's an incredible bargain on the rent. $5 works out to a dollar a year. But the tenant is responsible for utilities and for other costs and has to maintain liability insurance. It's at pretty good levels, $500,000, $100,000 per occurrence. So I'm fine with the lease as long as you're, and I assume you're giving a special deal because it's a historical society. And you've set forth their hours of operation. They're open more in this period from May 1st to October 31st, where they're open two Sundays a month, from 1:00 to 4:00. After that, November 1st to April 30th is just by appointment. But the lease is good. You don't have really many costs, other than if there were major repairs. So they're picking up your expense at least, and you want to have a historical society. So I'm fine with the lease as drafted.
Unfortunately, they are an aging group. So anybody that's interested in just the historical, or just the history of Juneau, if you've got time in your busy schedule, reach out to some of these people, and they will gladly welcome you into the group there. They used to be monthly. I don't know how often they meet now, but I've been a business member for years and what have you. They do a really nice job. Everything's hard paper, everything's categorized, and everything's cataloged down there. But this is a savings grace that the city does not have to take this on because of the fact that I'm worried right now. I talked to the daughter of the current treasurer, Secretary Rosie Greeman. She's not able to anymore. Couple of their more active members are all getting up there in age where they just don't have the physical ability to get down there and even keep the place open, let alone do much work. So like I said, I reach out to anybody. Any member of the community can belong to this if they're interested. We certainly need to get a younger bunch of people involved because I was a little leery of, like, oh, Megan, I didn't want you sending that until I could talk to somebody personally. And they said that they've had money given to them upon people's deaths and what have you. So they've got quite a bit of treasury built up that they can still pay the heat and the utilities and what have you. We did put a roof on the building a couple of years ago that used to be the former library at one time. So it was the old Methodist church way back then, and turned into the library, and now is our Historical Society. And I don't know how many years they've been in there. It's probably 20 or any game you remember. A long time they've been in there. Long time, anyway.
Yeah.
But yeah, they are an aging group. They need help. And like I said, the same display's been set up for many, many years. It would be nice to get some people with some ambition or some ability to be able to change things out a little bit, to allow people to come in and see something different each time that they visit. But we've only got a few people come in every year. Mostly out of counters.
All in favor of both lease terms? Makes sense to encourage them to keep going and not have it end up being the city responsibility. Basically, about your only responsibilities, you do have to plow the snow from the parking lot.
Yep.
You do have that obligation. They have to maintain the sidewalks and the steps and the snow and ice free condition.
Move on.
So I recommend the lease to you. I'm fine with the lease.
No other question? Roll call, both, please.
Brown? Aye. Evans?
Aye.
Foudy?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Merle?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Resolution 35-2022 has passed. Moving on. Personnel Committee?
Can I say?
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
The last thing that we worked with was the budget for 2023. Your department heads should be working with each department and bringing forward their budgets. Megan is working with our department heads to make sure they understand what the accounts and what the coding is, what goes there, and how it's being used so that we have accurate information so they can think correctly, and we can have a decent budget as far as knowledgeable budget. There are monies that are not coming in this year that we've had years pass, which may change our budget structure for this year, but we still have every intention of making a good budget decision.
Any other questions for Cheryl? Seeing none. Move on. Personnel Committee, Kay?
We did nothing.
No report? Public Safety, John?
We just had a special public safety meeting, so it was kind of short. We just had two resolutions to read. The only question that came up, Andy, is did we hear anything back in the house on Curdfield Avenue?
Some. I'm getting the parties allegedly to work together. So I talked to the responsible party. I've got his name in here, but he's interested in possibly buying.
Purchasing your half way.
Yeah. Or the other obligation would be if she would, after their insurance would pay, they each have to pay, it's a combination of $12,000. But I think he's leaning more toward possibly purchasing it. I'm trying to get them to work together. One is much more responsible and easier to reach than the other. Asher Rosenberg has been real compliant, very easy to work with. Devin Chaddos, none is easy to work with. Tried to get them to work together. They're doing that some, but I'm trying to push the sale thing. I think that'd be best. And they're getting closer.
Get something done here before winter.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I've been very impressed with him. He's been very cooperative.
Yeah, he came to one of our meetings, and he was wanting to move forward with this.
Right. So I think it is going together. It's just been a little harder than I expected. And the problem is more in her end.
You got to go over by her to have meetings? Because she lives in Montell, right?
She lives in a motel, but I've just been talking to her by phone. Now she's returning my phone calls. Our police chief doesn't face to face with people. Yeah, she got more cooperative once she served with a letter a while back, and since then, she's been more cooperative. And she's been on board.
And do we have a deadline?
I'd like to give her a deadline at the end of the month, but it's got to, at least they have to have an accepted offer to purchase or agreement on cleaning it up. I think that's a reasonable timeframe. I would think that. I would like to pursue that. Everybody on board with the end of the month?
Yeah. Definitely. Been over a year now, so we got to keep going.
Right.
What was that?
Will it be two of those things, too?
No, it was just last May, August, I think, is when it burnt last year.
I'll give 17th of 2021.
This is Asher. I'm Andy. I'm actually the one on all the legal forms that actually owns the property. It was good to hear that we were supposed to be here tonight, since I wasn't told.
No, you have been very cooperative with your work.
We'd like to get a resolve, but.
We want it taken care of. We don't want it to be there anymore. We're done with it.
By the end of the month here, we get something, something in paper.
That's what we're open for, too.
Good.
And just to clarify, this wasn't on the agenda.
Correct.
So just, otherwise.
I talked to attorney on Friday.
Okay. Just wanted to verify.
He told me about the meeting. We were close to coming halfway through the meeting and speak to him after this, more about it.
Okay. Perfect.
Then I came up.
Good enough. All right.
Bring it up so we can keep moving. All right. Thank you, Andy. Anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, I have two resolutions. First Resolution 32-2022, set date and time for trick-or-treat. Whereas the Public Safety Committee recommends that trick-or-treating be held Sunday, October 30th, 2022, between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. in the city of Juneau. And whereas the fire department will be helping with street crossing, and whereas the news will be sent to the Beaver Dam Daily Citizen for publication, now therefore, be resolved. Common Council, city of Juneau, accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau the 13th day of September 2022. I move for passage of Resolution 32-2022.
Motion by Schuster, second by Grattan. Any further discussion? Generally, the times we've been using trick or treats.
I think sometimes it floats a little earlier, but this time's a little earlier. Four to six?
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Roll call, both, please.
Schuster?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Foudy?
Aye.
Merle?
Aye.
Resolution 33-2022 has passed.
Resolution 33-2022, approve temporary Class B license, Chamber of Commerce softball league. Whereas the Juneau Chamber of Commerce has applied for temporary Class B license to hold a softball league to be held at Juneau Softball Diamond September 14th, 19th, 21st, 22nd, 28th, and October 3rd, 5th, 10th, 12th, 17th, 19th, 24th, 26th, 31st, and November 4th and 5th, 2022. And whereas the Juneau's Chamber of Commerce is an organization organized under Wisconsin State's statute 181 and has filed proper application at least 15 days prior to the scheduled event.
prior to the scheduled event. And whereas the Juneau Police Department and Public Safety Committee have both reviewed an application for this license and both recommend approving this license. Now therefore be resolved that the common council, the city of Juneau, accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by this common council of the city of Juneau this thirteenth day of September twenty twenty-two. I move the passage of resolution thirty-three, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Schuster, second by Foudy. Further discussion?
I hope that it doesn't snow. How many teams do they have happening for this tournament? Do you know, John?
I do not know. I think eighteen fifty is kind of getting it together. So I don't know if they've said how many teams they got.
No, they haven't. I know they have quite a few.
Did they?
They do, yeah.
No, you better tell the story behind the story here. The chamber is just a front for the eighteen fifties.
Because they can't get a.
Extension of premise.
Extension premise because it doesn't throw on their bar.
About their property.
So that's why the chamber kind of stepped up so they take the liquor license for them to have it on the softball diamonds.
The chamber is, I think, hosting the ones in November.
Yeah, they have a weekend deal.
They're doing the weekend, yep. But they just decided to take the whole.
Whole ball.
Whole ball wax, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions or comments? See none, roll call vote please.
Schuster.
Hi.
Foudy.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Evans.
Hi.
Grattan.
Hi.
Merle.
Hi.
Resolution thirty-three, twenty twenty-two has passed. Any other questions for John from public safety?
And that was kind of our meeting because we had just a special meeting so we didn't have, we didn't meet with the police or the fire EMS.
Kind of on a timeline for these two items.
Yeah, we needed this done, so that's why we quit the meeting, I think.
Okay, moving on, public works. We did not meet, but I have something to talk about on what the twenty twenty-two road construction projects that were scheduled in the city. The city did a borrowing and the D P W. got a portion of that money for road projects. The road projects were supposed to be done by the end of twenty twenty-two, but are now in a schedule to be done the first part of twenty twenty-three. We will be the first ones on their schedule because they said they want to get it off their books. The contracts contractor has already said they will honor the prices from this contract to not change next year. Jason Lau has filled out a change order and submitted that to any northeast asphalt. I believe everyone thought that the money had to be used by the end of twenty twenty-two. I had Megan email the Baird Company to make sure when we had, when we had to use the money. I have attached that email to this letter. The road projects were supposed to be done this year were Mill and Relays, northwest North Street from Highway twenty-six to Western, Jewel Street from North Fairfield Avenue to Western Avenue, South Street from South Main to South Fairfield Avenue, North Highland Avenue to the Center Street to the Wild Goose Park, but we might change that one out for West Center from West Street to North Fairfield Avenue because of all the construction going on in the Wild Goose subdivision. Crack sealing Maple Avenue, East Oak Grove Street to termination. Chip sealing was completed on North Fairfield Avenue. So it says the city qualified for five million dollar small issuer exemption from rebate. So you have three full years to May fourth, twenty twenty-four to spend the proceeds. Got the expenditure covered on it. Because of all the commitments they've made, they, I believe they got behind and we're running out of warm weather. So rather than having crummy streets done for us, we can wait and the money's still there to honor the contracts. My understanding we'll be the first ones on the schedule next year.
Correct.
See some of this stuff doing done in early spring. And the streets that we had, I mean, they're all in need of work. That's the reason they're on that list, but there's nothing that couldn't be wait, wait for another one. You know, on a Russian. Any other questions or comments? See none, moving on. Cable TV?
Cable TV did not meet, but I always want to put that word out there that we're all always looking for cable producers. So anyone interested, contact myself, Dave Bennett, the mayor. So that's all I have.
Any questions for you? Moving on, C D A. The only thing that's on the docket for them right now, and the C D A did go on record to, to cover the costs of some storm sewer extensions in the Wild Goose Park. We currently have one bid and waiting for a couple more. They're hard to get this time of year, but Scottishers maybe is going to have something by the end of this month. Other than that, C D A is pretty much on status quo right now. There's not much going on in the industrial park. We pretty much got Bullseye and A P C P, Auto Pet Care. What's that? Those issues are behind us in some, transfers of titles and what have you. They're all going on at Auto Pet Care. Yeah, pretty quiet right now.
Yeah, we did put on our meeting to have a tour of it.
Yep. And if you ever see that on the agenda that we do post a tour, feel free to show up.
Very nice place.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
Top notch job building that place. Business stays as good as what it is right now.
Yep.
Moving on, rec committee.
We did not meet.
Utility commission report to the common council rep. Richard.
We had last Thursday. We got updates on the progress of the utility portion of the Highland Oak Street project. Electrical conversion on Oak Street is above complete. After Charter finishes their work, overhead work should be down near the end of the month. Temporary streetlights will remain in place until concrete is poured in the spring. Mick reported that residents have been happy with how the contractors have been keeping the area cleaned up. All water and sewer utilities are in the ground on Highland Street. Lateral tie-ins are being worked on. There are twenty-seven lead laterals that have to be replaced on the private side. Twenty-one are scheduled and some residents have not responded yet. Speaking of laterals, the mayor informed the commission that the public side of lateral piping on the section of Oak Street between Main and Fair Street are made of lead and need to be replaced. So keep that in mind for the coming year. We had some problems with well number three last month. Well number three is the one up by Hicken Park. It was found that the shaft had snapped. The pump was installed in nineteen ninety-nine and it was recommended to be replaced. The commission authorized repairs to be made by municipal well and pump. Well number three also requires an electrical upgrade, including a generator installation. The commission voted to approve the bid of Hogan Electric to be the contractor for this project. Bob Patel is continuing to talk to Sensient about putting the contract, bring it up every month. So, and then I have a couple of resolutions for the common council that are required to be considered in anticipation of the upgrade project of its wastewater treatment plant. So resolution number thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two, city of Juneau. Authorized representative to file applications for financial assistance from State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund. Whereas it is the desire of the city of Juneau, Wisconsin, a municipal corporation, to file several applications for state financial assistance for its improvements to the wastewater treatment plant and all other related upgrades under the Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund, then S S two eight one, twenty fifty-eight, two eight one, point sixty, and two eight one, point six one, Wisconsin statutes. Whereas it is necessary to designate a representative for filing said applications. Be it therefore resolved by this council of the city of Juneau that the mayor is hereby appointed as an authorized representative for the city of Juneau for the purpose of filing these applications and that the representative is further authorized and empowered to do all necessary things and take all necessary steps in connection with said applications adopted the thirteenth day of September twenty twenty-two. I would move the passage of resolution number thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Evans, second by Brown. Further discussion? I think this is pretty self-explanatory. It basically obligates them to be able to cover their costs until such time that, that there is outside funding that's coming in is what it boils down to. We, as a council, have been in constant communication with the utility commission, making sure that they are trying to file for any available assistance as far as any funding that's out there. It's pretty much documented here, so this is not much more to be said. We've got a forty-year-old treatment plant, forty-plus year old, that is well past its design's expectation as far as design life. We've been fortunate that it was built with the quality that it was, that they projected a twenty-year life and we can make that forty years out of ours. So I guess it's time to do something with it. Commission has looked at what they have there presently and rather than building a new plant to a different location, this one certainly has some worth to be able to be added on to and approved on, so we're going with that. They hired M S A, a substantial amount of money to do all the studies and what have you that needs to be done and supposed to assist us in some of this stuff as far as securing these grants and loans. So hopefully everything will come out so that we can afford to use our water and sewer in the community there. This definitely can have an effect on our rates. So any, any additional funding we can get from the outside certainly will be well appreciated and needed. Any other questions or comments? See none, roll call vote please.
Evans.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Foudy.
Hi.
Grattan.
Hi.
Merle.
Hi.
Schuster.
Hi.
Resolution thirty-six, twenty twenty-two has passed.
Okay, resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, city of Juneau. Resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures. Whereas the city of Juneau Dodge County, Wisconsin, the city, plans to make several improvements to its wastewater treatment facility and other related facilities, the project. And whereas the city expects to borrow funds and incurred debt from one or more possible sources on a long-term basis by issuing tax exempt bonds, promissory notes, V N R, E I F. funds, or other debt to finance the project, the loan. And whereas because proceeds of the debt which will provide project financing will not become available prior to commencement of the project, the city may need to provide interim financing to cover costs of the, of the project incurred prior to the receipt of the loan or other debt proceeds. And whereas it is necessary, desirable, and in the best interests of the city to use monies from its funds on an interim basis until the loan becomes available. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Juneau Dodge County, Wisconsin, that section one, expenditure of funds, the city shall make expenditures as needed from its funds to pay the costs of the project until loan proceeds become available. Section two, declaration of official intent. The council of the city of Juneau hereby officially declares its intent under twenty-six C F R. section one dot one fifty dash two to reimburse said expenditures with proceeds of the debt, the principal amount of which is not expected to exceed twelve million dollars. Section three, effective date. This resolution shall become effective upon its adoption and approval, adopted the thirteenth day of September twenty twenty-two. I would move the passage of resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Evans, second by Brown. Any further discussion? I fail to add, there's a very big player in this, in this formula and financing and its Sensient flavors. They've got the opportunity to either pay their, their share of the plant all upfront or do it over time. They indicated that they were at least recently interested in paying it all upfront. So that's huge for the city of Juneau because that's about thirty-four percent less that we would have to borrow. And make a month of payments on and what have you. So we've got our fingers crossed. We've been very patient with Sensient. We keep hearing that their lawyers are reviewing that.
Haven't heard from their lawyers.
And that's what's kind of frustrating right now because this has been in the making for going on three years now and getting kind of old when that's the response that they always give.
They're great proposed agreement now, so.
I think we just need a response. I think we've hammered out every detail, right? Of course, you know better than anybody and we've had opportunity to review the discussions that we've had with them, right? In detail, so.
Yeah, it'd be nice to finally get a response.
It would be. Council reps have anything to respond to on that?
Do you guys have questions from Nicole? She's here as well, from M S A.
Yes, this is all related to the Clean Water Fund application that we're submitting at the end of September. So just kind of a hoop, just got to jump through to, to get some money, so.
And I'll say it again, we've invested highly with M S A as far as carrying this out and we need to move forward as best as we can. But like I said, it's kind of in their hands right now and that's kind of where we, we've got to get a response before we can move forward. But this certainly needs to be acted upon tonight, so. Go, go vote please.
Evans.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Foudy.
Hi.
Grattan.
Hi.
Merle.
Hi.
Resolution thirty-seven, twenty twenty-two has passed. Anything else from utility?
I have nothing else.
Continue to pay your bills. Disconnections do happen and they will continue to happen and it does cost to have them reconnected. So it's not free.
And what's not flushable?
Flushable wipes are not flushable.
Or little boys on the floor.
Anybody's.
Our tennis shoes or, or toys and that's. Okay, moving on, any old business thing? New business? Since we have heard here from M S A, I imagine you're encouraging us to get those income surveys, correct?
Yeah, I, we'll evaluate tomorrow. We did get some feedback from, from them about the other portion that you guys wanted to add. So I need to, to kind of clarify some stuff and then I'll be in touch with you about that. But, but yeah, we can, we can still definitely do income surveys for that first portion that we, I talked about, so.
And that is?
Because that could be eligible.
Before the thirtieth of September, correct?
Um, I think you. No, not necessarily.
Oh, no.
No, there, no, we technically have until January fifteenth to get all of the income survey stuff in. But you guys probably want to know for sure whether or not, you know, sooner than later, whether or not you can qualify for it, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Help us make the decision on whether we want to move forward.
Yeah.
And these have to be, if we are approved for that funding, they'll be in the next construction year, eligible for the next construction year.
Actually, see, we would apply in, in May and we actually, we actually will be submitting design, all the, the plans and stuff, so we could actually start next year already if you wanted to. We'd have to wait to bid the project till probably August, but we might be able to, yeah, so they might not be able to start, yeah. So you're, you're probably right, it'll probably be about a year till work starts, but.
But soon we get them in, soon we'll have an answer. Just to clarify, this is the Oak Street section from Debo to Fair. Correct. Fair. Have you recorded on the added missing length was when we discovered we had lead water services on the public side on, from Fair, or Miller Street, or from Fair Street up to Main Street, as you said. Okay, any other questions? See none? Seeing none. Moving on. Approved provisional carpenters license, Jane?
Provisional licenses recommended approval for Destiny Paulson, Reno Catherine, Jay Tabor, and Thomas Spies. I recommend to approve the forty-five day provisional licenses.
Motion by Foudy, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Carry.
Regular licenses for Destiny Paulson, Reno Catherine, Emily McKee, Jay Tabor, Thomas Spies. I recommend to approve those of regular carpenters licenses.
Motion by Foudy, second by Grutton. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Carry. No other business?
No, for your-
Motion by Schuster?
Second.
Second by Merle. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Carry.